All right, the record meeting of the Mayor and City of Port Allen. City Council, City of Port Allen, Louisiana, day is Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. It's five thirty-eight, thirty-six P. M. Uh, City Council Chamber, third floor, City Hall. Each person must be signed before any council chambers agenda they wish to come in on. If they're not sitting in the chambers when the agenda is heard, they will be notified by an officer during the the council chambers to address the agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Agenda number one, call to order. Agenda number two, federal leaders, these things. Federal leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Agenda three, broker.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Hubbell.
Here.
Ms. Lacy, Chris, Mr. Revere.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Agenda number four, public minutes of a regular meeting on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Lacy, any objections? You're not. Agenda five, public comments, comments from the public are loud in accordance with the Louisiana statute for Chief Governor eleven, section two, two thirty-four, and specifically limited to an agenda to be considered during the meeting. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. Agenda number six. Hear from Thomas Pierce on small business community redevelopment, Mr. Pierce.
Good evening, we're at South Memphis, Mayor, thank you for allowing us to be present here tonight to try to tell you about our programs. I'm a South Central Planning and Development Commission, and uh, our purpose is to promote economic development for small businesses within this, um, Port Allen, in the area. And we have a program right now where we help small businesses by, that's been impacted by Hurricane Ida, due to flood two thousand twenty-one in May. And tonight, we have with me Mr. Colored Q, our attorney and program manager. He's going to give us more detail about what we do and what we're trying to do to help small businesses in this area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you again for having us today. Um, as, um, Tom mentioned, we're here with a, it's a federal nodal's, uh, Office of Community Development has, uh, you've heard of all the restore programs, big housing push, uh, everything was stored, there's a Laura Delta version for the western part of state, and here we are today with the Ida version. Uh, thank goodness that Hurricane Ida was not dead center looking at Port Allen, but, um, the parish was apparently impacted enough that it made it within the phase one program area. So I would suspect that somewhere near the parish or more in particular in Port Allen, there are businesses that were impacted by that we want to let them know about this program so that they can take advantage of it. And again, everything I'm going to say has to do with the zip code here in Port Allen. The rest of the parish ironically will be in a phase two, and I'm making the assumption that there will be a phase two that the money doesn't go out and they use it all on the phase one parishes and zip code areas. So again, everything I'm going to say tonight has to do with the zip code here in, uh, Port Allen. So again, um, the feds, housing and urban development sends money to the state, the state develops a cast of programs. One of the programs, uh, is the Restore Small Business Loan Program. Uh, it has to do, as Mr. Pierce said, with the Hurricane Ida and the floods of May of twenty-one. Now, I know the area on the other side of Baton Rouge was hit pretty hard, but Gonzales to, um, you know, airline highway area. I don't know if there was flooding here in Port Allen in May of twenty-one, but it was a series of storms. It hit Cal Keshu, it hit that area, it hit La Juge where I'm from. So again, I don't know the, um, I don't know if you were hit by the, the May floods, but again, everybody's, everybody was around for Hurricane Ida, and you may be able to help us identify businesses in this area that could take advantage of this. So who can, and what I'm doing, this is my PowerPoint, this is kind of my cheat sheet. The brochure has much more information, which includes the website, the eight hundred number, how to get an appointment. We do have an office on South Harold Speller Ferry Road. Um, we are a planning development district, just like Capital Region Planning Commission. Um, again, we're our sister agency, uh, we do a little bit more planning, or we do a little bit more work statewide. So again, we don't, uh, worry about what parishes we are serving, we just, we're here to serve. Uh, in this example, we're serving the business community. So again, um, impacted by, with non-construction expenses. Again, what we're trying to do is put money into businesses. It's federal money, so if we do construction work, you gotta get into data stake and a lot more bureaucracy. So if we can make you eligible, we can potentially fund you with some equipment money and some working capital. This is the program area that I've described, the gold area is the Ida area. As we keep on, what businesses might be eligible? To be eligible, you have to have at least one employee. One employee can be the owner, it can be mom and pop. Uh, you know, if, the idea is, uh, they have to be able to say that they participate in their business, and between the two of them or either one of them, uh, they do about thirty-five hours a week. We know small businesses do much more than thirty-five hours a week, but that's the federal full-time equivalent. So at least one, uh, one business, one employee, excuse me, no more than fifty. Again, we're not trying to fund, you know, Dow Chemical and all that big, you know, conglomerates. We're trying to find small businesses to, uh, take advantage of this. You have to have been open for Ida. Again, this is not to start a new business, this is for businesses impacted by. You have to at least, well, you have to either be still open, or if you're closed, you have to be ready to reopen. And this, these funds can potentially help you to reopen. So if your business was closed by Ida, you've not been able to figure out how reopen, this might be the opportunity. You had to have at least twenty-five thousand of gross revenue in the year prior, so twenty-twenty, twenty-five thousand gross revenue. The idea again is let's fund full-time businesses. Now, if you have a sideline business, good for you, but we're trying to get the money into the hands of full-time business people. The biggest criteria for eligibility is you have to at least have ten thousand in physical damage or a twenty percent decline in revenue. Now, ten thousand in physical damage, in my opinion, is not that much. A tree falls on your business car, a tree falls on the awning, a tree falls on your business building. Ten thousand is not very hard, uh, you know, a threshold. Um, give us a copy of the insurance claim. Again, we need third-party evidence to show and verify the damage, a picture is not going to do. Or the twenty percent decline. Originally, the state said, let's compare your twenty-twenty taxes to your twenty-one taxes, it has to go down by twenty percent. And we explained to them, timeout, twenty-twenty was COVID. So you had so many businesses whose income was depleted in twenty-twenty, they agreed to allow us to compare nineteen to twenty-one. So we can do twenty to twenty-one, we can do nineteen to twenty-one, just let's see how we can qualify you. So again, if you meet all of these, and I say all, the last one is an either-or, physical damage or decline. So, so you're then, if you're eligible, then we flip the page, what are you eligible for? Again, we're not gonna, we're not going to give you money to construct whatever it is that helped to make you eligible. What we're going to give you money is for working capital. What does that mean? You pay rent for your business location, let's calculate six months rent. You have a mortgage for the building, the business, and I talk about your house, again, the business location. You pay mortgage, let's calculate six months rent. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to go down this list, keep stacking it. Non-owner wages and benefits, so if you do have employees, let's see what you pay them, the wages and the benefits. Again, for six months, let's calculate, it will make an average, and then we calculate it times six to calculate the six months average. Utility bills, gas, electric, water, phone bill, cell bills, the internet, you know what your bills are. Show us three months of this, uh, of, you know, receipts for, uh, either of the, any of the six months prior to the storm. And that's actually a change in the last twenty-four hours, it used to be the three months prior, but again, anything within. We need three bills from the six-month period prior to the storm to create an average that you then multiply by six. Um, not on this is fuel. Another thing we got them to change and improve the program by. If you have a fleet of trucks, uh, the fuel that you use in these vehicles for business, again, we're not talking about your personal truck, but for the business, the fuel, again, we get an average multiplied by six, calculating six months. Inventory, if you have a retail establishment, a gas station, very easy to make this number pretty high. Uh, which, and again, we're adding all of these numbers. Equipment, equipment is going to be fun. If you had equipment damaged by the storm, and again, you have that, you have that insurance claim. If you have been able to replace it, we can reimburse that replacement. Now, we're going to be, we're going to deduct any insurance money, but again, some people didn't have insurance, some people had a deductor. So again, if you had equipment that was damaged and you replaced it or repaired it even, we can reimburse that replacement or repair. If you were not able to replace or repair, we can get, get us some quotes. We can fund the replacement, you need three quotes for any piece of equipment that you had, or again, three quotes for the repair of the piece of equipment that might still be hobbly and blown but have not been repaired. Everything I'm saying, we're, we're adding up, again, we're stacking these costs. The last one is my favorite. The last one says, if there is a piece of equipment that you did not have that could make your business more sustainable the next time there is a storm or a disaster.
A generator.
A generator on a trailer, a trailerable generator, because again, this has to be movable equipment, it can't be something built into your building. So if you could have, if you can dream up a piece of equipment, and again, it doesn't have to be a generator, but that's the easiest example that I can come up with. You know your, your, your business community knows their businesses, and they know what that might be. Um, quantify that, get three quotes, and that can be added to what they call an award. So let's, let's go into what happens when we calculate all this up. The state likes to call it an award, it is a loan. The housing program, the restore housing program was a grant. The small business program is a loan. But before we decide that we're not interested, let's turn the page. What are we talking about? Everything we've stacked needs to at least be ten thousand dollars. We're not going to do anything smaller than ten. Everything that we've stacked can be as much as a hundred fifty. And then you see in some copies, it's an asterisk, but again, in parentheses. By exception, if you can justify needing more than a hundred fifty thousand, which, as I understood in a conversation today, eighty percent of our files can justify a number higher than a hundred fifty. So with justification, you can potentially get up to a quarter million dollars. Again, this is a loan, but this loan is a zero percent interest loan. You, for the first six months, there's no repayment. It can be amortized up to seven years. So we're talking seven and a half years of zero percent interest. Um, it is a loan. But the last bullet is my favorite piece. Uh, you pay back, well, the total, and let's just do easy math. Let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars, so I will literally be the person sitting with you and signing paperwork for the hundred thousand. Um, we're going to amortize, we're going to assume that you will earn the forgiveness. So we're going to amortize sixty thousand, not a hundred, which will make your note lower, easier to pay. We're going to assume that you will earn, and when you reach repayment of sixty percent. So I'll give you a hundred thousand, you make your payments over seven and a half years, you get to a point where you pay back sixty percent. At that point in time, we will check, did you earn forgiveness? What does that mean? Did you turn in your tax returns to us every year, your financials? Did you turn in the receipts for what you use the funds for? There's a tick list of things that we say you're earning, you're earning your, your, your forgiveness. So what happens? We check off all the boxes, uh, there, there's pay, there's going to be paperwork, it's federal money, so there's going to be paperwork a year later. How many employees do you have, how, you know, this, all the federal bureaucracy and they want to do the reporting. Uh, we're going to check the box, it's a one-pager, did you do everything you needed to do? Did you pay back the sixty percent? Uh, if so, that last forty percent is forgiven. That becomes a grant. Uh, that becomes a taxable grant, so save a little bit, a little bit aside. What I tell people is get a red folder, save your receipts, uh, because again, we, we get audited, every file's going to be audited. So again, nobody wants to be on the front page of any favorites, federal dollars. Uh, get your red envelope, uh, put your receipts in it, send us your tax returns, um, and you can get forgiveness. So again, it sounds too good to be true, I understand that. Um, I do not think, we, we've been doing this since May, I do not think we have an application from, uh, Port Allen. Please help us find these small businesses that might take advantage of this. We're begging the state, we had a conference call with the state, give us, let the governor get on a television commercial. He did it five or six years ago. Again, it sounds too good to be true, some people believe that it's too good to be true. A lot of paperwork, but again, we have, I've opened eighteen offices across the state, I've hired thirty-something people to help people fill out their application. It can be done online at your house. But again, I've opened eighteen locations and hired thirty-something people, we have an office in South Harold Speller Road. Two people will help you fill out your application if you want to, if you want them to. They'll, uh, scan and upload the documents that have to be, you know, attached to it, so. Help me find these businesses that need to know about this, um, this, this loan, the program. We used to call them grants and loans, but again, at this point, you have to earn the forgivable piece. But you're earning it by doing what you said you were going to do, you're earning it by paying the sixty percent, you're earning it by turning in your tax returns, showing us the financials, the paperwork having to do to employees, and all that good fund federal stuff. You know, the feds want to count. Um, I will answer any questions.
Any questions?
Pretty explanatory.
Uh, again, the brochure has a bit more information, it's an eight-hundred number. We have our website, scpdc dot R, I can leave some brochures. Um, visited with Elliot before, he can help us maybe get it on your Facebook page and/or, he said YouTube, something. Anything that y'all could do to help us, we'd appreciate it. Again, the business community needs to know about it, if they don't know about it, I will post that on this same conference call because not getting a lot of applications in Lake Charles, that is absolutely a concern, because absolutely, Lake Charles is Laura and Delta.
Right.
Uh, I don't know what else to do other than we're, we're doing what we do here, we did billboards, we did radio. Uh, again, I, um, we're government, we're here to help you, we don't know about advertising anything, I hate to say that, but, but. Help us find these businesses, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can go on to agenda.
Mayor, leave this here.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it, Governor. Mr. Pierce, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Agenda seven, authorized merely to approve an agreement between the City of Port Allen and Lions Environmental LLC for contract support for the Louisiana DQ requirements for the sewer treatment plan, Mr. Jones.
I don't care, I don't know where it's at.
All right, we'll pass on this one to Mr. Jones to get back. Agenda eight, public hearing to attain views regarding the city's application for, uh, LCG BG program. Any minds from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item? No one wish to be heard from the public, close the public hearing. Agenda nine, consider adopting a resolution re-adopting the participation plan relative to the State of Louisiana Office, the State of Louisiana Office of Community Development Grant Program. Mr. Rose.
Resolution number one, and it's, um, so I guess we should have asked because that's not resolution number one. It would be number three, we have three, four, and five, because we've already had resolutions one and two. So do we have to do a change in the agenda to change the resolution?
No, I believe we can proceed, that's it.
Okay, well, this would be resolution number three, it's located in your, in your binder. Resolution number three of twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the City of Port Allen to re-adopt Citizen Participation Plan relative to the State of Louisiana Office of the Commute, of the Commute relative to the state of Louisiana Office of the Communit-, of the Community Development Grant Programs. And this is just a redo of something, I think that this is for year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. We have to have all this in, um, in line to do it. And if you look through your binder, you have a lot of documents in there that they, that were sent to us and I didn't, and want to not include things that we, everything can be explanatory once you read through them. But basically, we're just setting up to apply for these, uh, loans, and this is why we have to have these resolutions, uh, on hand to do. And this is the first of three, so this is resolution number three.
This is something we do every year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Aracal, let's touch on it.
Yeah, but he's out until next couple of weeks and I can't get it.
I motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy, mean our garden. Any objections? Hearing that.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Revere.
Yes.
Agenda ten, consider adoption of a resolution to hire administrative services on the city of Port Allen relative to fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Louisiana Community Development Block Grants. Resolution number four, four of twenty twenty-three, Mr. Roche.
Okay, this would be resolution number four of twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the city of Port Allen to hire administrative service, services relative to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Louisiana Community Development Block Grant. So that's a part of the package.
Second.
I motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy, mean our garden. Any objections? Hearing that.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Revere.
Yes.
Agenda eleven, consider a resolution to re-adopt procurement policies for the city of Port Allen relative to community development block grants. Resolution number five of twenty twenty-three, Mr. Roche.
Resolution number five of twenty twenty-three, a resol-, resolution of the city of Port Allen to re-adopt procurement policy for the city of Port Allen relative to Louisiana Community Development Block Grants. And this is the third part of that package.
Got a second? I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilwoman Lacy. Any objections? Hearing that.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Revere.
Yes.
Agenda twelve, public hearing to obtain views regarding their ordinance for redistricting of the city applying for the purpose of elections and representation. Floor is open for anyone in the public who wish to comment on this agenda item. No response, we close the public hearing.
Do I, do I need to preface my vote with what I'm gonna say, or do I need to go ahead with public hearing?
No, you can do it when we do the agenda.
The vote?
Yeah, I mean, any council member can discuss the, uh, the item that'll be up for adoption on the substantive item. This, this was just a public hearing. The action item would come next, so the council is free to debate and, and express their opinions on, on the action item.
Agenda thirteen, considering adopting the ordinance for redistricting of the city of Port Allen for the purpose of election and representation. Ordinance number eleven of twenty twenty-three, Mr. Roche.
Ordinance number eleven of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Port Allen, Louisiana approving the redistricting of the city of Port Allen for the purpose of election and representation. I think you have the package in there, well, that was originally set as part of ordinance, which is what I gave.
Again, to recap why this item is before you. Uh, the council previously adopted a, a resolution, uh, I'm sorry, ordinance adopting Plan AA as it shows the reapportioned plan. Uh, essentially, there's kind of two documents that go along with the plan. One is a, a map, if you will, that shows, uh, a visual depiction of each election district boundary. Electronic versions of that map are submitted to the Secretary of State after the adoption of any plan. The other document that goes with it is a, a written ordinance, which basically puts the map, if you will, into word format. A description of, of, a verbal description of each, each, uh, election district. Uh, after the, uh, the council had adopted Plan AA, it had been brought to the intention that the written portion, the written ordinance, uh, the description in it did not match necessarily the map that had been adopted. There was basically one little group that was left out. The ordinance, it did not affect any of the population counts or anything like that from what had been presented, uh, to the council uh, in the map, so they, it was really just a, a add more language in to, to incorporate one little area into the written description that had been inadvertently left off. So the demographer did go back and provided the mayor with that corrected ordinance, and, and that's essentially what we have been doing is just to be safe, go back and, and, and correct it.
And Mr. Correct the version, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they corrected the version, it's, version is written in District One of the, uh, the ordinance.
This page of what was for us.
Right. And it reads the section, all of the Port Saint West Avenue Parish boundary that is private follows, beginning with the point of intersection of, of the Port Island City Line at the Louisiana Avenue and the intersection of Elmore Street, proceed northerly along Elmore Street to Roseville Road, and proceed eastally along Roseville Road to intersection of Seventh Street, and proceed northerly along a nine visible extension of Seventh Street to a nine invisible boundary of West Avenue School property. And proc-, and proceeding eastally along a nine visible property of West Avenue Parish School property to a nine visible extension to North Jefferson Avenue, and proceed southerly along a nine visible extension of North Jefferson Avenue to its intersection with Roseville Road, and proceed eastally along Roseville Road to the shoreline. And proceeding sou-, southerly along the shoreline to a nine visible extension of Course Street. And that section was the section that was handed. Any other discussion?
I think everybody would agree that when you look at these plans, and the demographer has it in here, you have it on a national news, you have, you're using percentages to determine what you're gonna have. I'm sure that everybody, if you keep up with the news, you're familiar with the Supreme Court case involving Alabama. Alabama has seven congressional districts. Makeup of the state of Alabama is sixty-eight point nine percent white, twenty-six point eight percent black. They're presently asking for a second majority black district. Sounds good to me, I don't have a bitter problem with that. You got Louisiana coming in on heels with the whole thing. Sixty-two percent point five white, thirty-two percent point eight black. With six, six congressional seats, asking for a second majority black district. Sounds good to me. Now, when we get to Port Allen, the percentages are roughly the same except they're flip-flopped. We have sixty point zero one black, thirty-three point ninety-nine one. But yet, in the districts by this double A plan, all districts are majority black. So I'm sure that if Mr. Floyd was here, he'd say congressional districts are, do not fall under the same criteria as municipal, but whatever they do, and, uh, you still have the same percentage. Now, I'm just, everybody knows I'm not for this program, this, uh, proposal. And I would strongly urge the council, when you sit up here and use the word community, then walk it. Because when you're leaving part of Louisiana and that's what you're doing with this, don't sit up here and talk about community. But that's just my feeling, these are the percentages. The census is done federally, US Supreme Court is the third branch of the government of the United States of America. I don't know what to say, Mr. Floyd is not.
Any other comments?
So what are you saying that we're not being fair with your other district?
No, three districts.
See what they need then in Alabama, Louisiana, and I'm agreeing with them.
Mr. Hubble is out of, Mr. Hubble, has it gone to the, uh, US Supreme Court yet? Has it made it there? It has, yes, and they were.
They have been ordered to.
Ordered to, yeah. Louisiana will be.
They're coming right on the hill.
Right behind, yeah.
But the, the Louisiana case is not as forward law as the Alabama case was.
But, you know, I, Jeff O and Mr. Hubble said, I mean, it is fair. Population is, whatever the numbers were he, he threw out, your district should mirror that. This, what we have in Port Allen won't mirror the city of Port Allen's population, but, I mean, it is what it is. My, you know, we'll all, my fellow council members, we'll all vote the way you see fit, and. And it's good, the state of Alabama's going before the US Supreme Court, and the US Supreme Court deemed, you know, the initial proposal was not fair, they are entitled to minority districts. It seemed like that would fit Port Allen also.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the map, I have a problem, what, what, what you mean when you say about community? Tell me, tell me what you know about community. Tell me. Um, yeah, tell me what you know about community, just since you just wanna bring that up, and I know I ran on community first. So let me see what you, what, what you feel about community, and how it's not inclusive when we say community, I just wanna hear that.
How can you say that thirty-three point three percent that's left out affected them? Yeah, they can vote, everybody can vote.
Community, let's go back to that.
Community, let's, uh.
I wanna know, just know what you mean when you say that, like, when you say when we sit up here and we talk about community, but this doesn't reflect community, how? Is this not equal to our community?
Community is a whole.
Okay, and what do your community reflect? The same thing these maps reflect? They have a majority of community that's either not doing the census or that's not living in Port Allen. We can't do nothing about the numbers, but just skew them in the. Just 'cause it don't fall the way certain people want it to fall, hey, that's, it is what it is, we didn't make the numbers up. We just had to use the data that we was given and make it apply. Now, it has been a different way before, and that's just how the numbers fell, but now, this is how the numbers are falling now. I mean, what's, I don't see a big problem. It's still equal opportunity, isn't it? Oh, actually, um, I'm gonna say this here, I said it from the beginning, and I'ma say it now. Mr. Floyd asked all of us council members, that we have a problem or issue with our district, to please meet with him. And I would say it again, over and over and over again. Only two council members met with Mr. Floyd, and it was myself and Brandon. And I asked, were y'all pleased with y'all district? No one said anything. Now, I don't know if y'all got backlash from your constituents or what, but you all didn't say nothing. Gary, I bet you say what you need to say. I said, I can't be a mind reader to what you all want. And I kept asking you, talk to the man, you, y'all didn't. So we feel that everything is good until, well. And I told you, I expressed my concern to you back then, why y'all didn't say anything when this man asked y'all several times to come and meet with him.
I did meet with him in the conference room right there, and he showed me all the plans. And as I was leaving, I said, I would like to study more, but at this present time, I'm in agreement with the one that stayed was headline HR. And that was my inclination too. And I did have that meeting.
And trying to answer your question, I mean, I, I did, I met with him, and, and I made my proposal, and I, I stood by it, I still felt like it was, you know, it blurred amounted to, and I hate, I hate breaking up race, 'cause, you know, I don't feel like, you know, I, I look at things the way they are. And mine had, uh, it, it, uh, more closely fit the racial makeup of the city of Port Allen. Three black, two white. And I thought, if you wanna follow the population like the Supreme Court made the state of Alabama do, that's kind of, and, you know. And also, and I'll, also brought up the fact that my polls of the districts only move two blocks in the whole city. And I know it doesn't have to be that way, but to me, that's the most seamless way, less, least invasive way, but. Again, I'm, so yes, I, I mean, I did meet with Mr. Floyd, and my, my reasoning didn't change after I met with him the first time, so.
And your, and your map unreflected what we have from the baseline, and the numbers were, were different from then to now. And the only thing that you're looking at really doesn't have blacks, every, more blacks in each district, but if you're looking for voting, you still have to look at who can vote and who can't vote. Like, there are more whites voting in these districts as well. So it just only mean you have to get out and do your due diligence to get the votes you need to be able to secure these seats. That's, that's all it is.
I'll move.
I accept.
I think we already had a motion.
Yeah, please, uh, Ms. Lacy and Mr. Brown.
Any other questions, comments?
No, sir.
You got? You got any, okay, you got anyone from the audience who should comment on this issue? Hearing that, I got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, and second by Councilwoman Gordon.
Brown.
Brown. I got a motion by Councilwoman Brown, second by Councilwoman Lacy.
It was Lacy and Brown.
First time?
Yes.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilwoman Brown. Any objections?
And actually, just, as I'm starting, mayor, actually just voting on the correct wording of the district, you know, the correct.
Yes.
This is the, uh, basically it's re-adoption of the ordinance that has the language, the correct language.
Okay, 'cause we already had voted on.
Yeah, this, this is the same map that technically I already had adopted and voted on. And adopted a previous ordinance for the same plan, but again, that ordinance had one, uh, you know, some missing language in it. Now that is.
Okay, just vote for the correct language.
I mean, detail.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
No.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
No.
Hold your hand.
Thank you. Ten nine fourteen, public, uh, Mr. Joseph came back, so we'll go back to ten nine.
Seven.
Seven. Authorize Mayor Lisa to approve an agreement between the city of Port Allen and Lyons Environmental LLC for contract support for Louisiana DEQ programs for the sewer treatment plant. Mr. Joseph?
Good evening, council. Well, this issue is associated with the public works sewer treatment facility specifically. There are myriad forms and reports that are required to maintain compliance with DEQ. And there was some, I guess, turnover. And the current provider of our lab services, Pace Analytical, used to do the lab work as well as the reporting. But they've made some changes in their system, so the reporting they provided is no longer available. Lyons Environmental is a company that apparently is run by an individual that previously did work for us under a different name, and he's sold his company to the company that took over that work. And now he's back on his own, attempting to contract the city to continue providing the reports. Mr. Bradford has indicated that it's imperative that the work is performed. He has confidence in Lyons Environmental. It's operated by a gentleman by Nathan Levy, and the service is no longer available through Pace. So Pace will continue to do the testing for Lyons. Of course.
So if you had to guess, Lance, what would be the annual cost? I see two hundred, it seems, two hundred a month and then fifty dollars per quarter?
It'll, yeah, it'll depend on the volume of services requested. But currently, we never had it all itemized out because it was just one invoice for Pace. You know, they were invoices for the testing as well as the compliance. So we have not yet paid the invoice for Lyons because it had been brought in for you. But Mr. Levy has been assisting Mr. Bradford anyway, because he knew that there was a period where there was no one providing that service anymore. We had a meeting with him last week. He can do a lot more than what he's doing in this regard, but you're talking two hundred a month, fifty dollars a quarter. And there are some, it depends, sometimes there are interim compliance issues that arise with DEQ that he may have to consult upon.
Does Bill Murray a hundred twenty-five?
That's correct. But the vast majority of his work is fixed. The billable is just if it's summarized, doesn't fall into any of the fixed categories.
But he's not able to test.
Sorry?
He can't test.
No, 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 no. He doesn't have a lab. He just does the paperwork that's required to submit the testing information to the state. It's a, I mean, it's a process that's been ongoing for a while, you know? It's always been provided, outsourced. It's just that there's some consolidation, consolidation that occurred in the arena. So one company sold out to another company, and then they decided, you know, they ran it, you know, as one big company for a while. And they decided, well, you know, we do testing, we just want to do testing. So we're going to get out of the compliance part. So it's just, you know, the nature of the beast in terms of growth and business development. Things change, just got to, you know, all in all, find another source. So Mr. Levy, Mr. Bradford identified Mr. Levy. He submitted his documentation to the mayor. He was satisfied enough to present it to the council to authorize execution of contract.
Mayor, you met with Mr. Levy?
Yeah, we had a meeting this week, or last week, in my office. He assured me that, you know, he's from the sister city, you know, whatever. You know, we got issues with the sewer treatment plant that it is. And right now, he goes, sisters, so that we can stay out of.
Right. Stay in compliance.
Stay in compliance and out of violation.
We have operational issues. We don't have daily compliance issues, just for the record. But operational issues associated with the fact that it's a sixty-plus year old plant. So, you know, there's only so much you could do in that regard. But we have maintained compliance with the project.
Lance, are y'all still looking for land for the purchase of the latest, so it's fine?
We are.
Any luck?
That depends. So, okay. The type of plant that we are attempting to develop requires at least six acres. Mr. Ericold suggested acquiring ten acres to provide adequate buffer around those six acres. So, you know, you don't have to necessarily see all of the inner workings of it from any particular location. So the plan is to try to find a ten acre piece that allows us to place it somewhere in the center and somewhere that leave space for additional development, but also, like I said, buffering from outside lines of sight. That being said, as you know, this city is virtually landlocked. There's just not a lot of available land that meets those requirements. And that also fall within a particular location in order to utilize our current discharge line. It could save us a substantial sum of money if we could figure out any method to, well, a location that allows us to keep the line happy as opposed to developing a new line to discharge into the Mississippi River. We have approached some folks, as you know, those efforts were unsuccessful. There is a piece of property that I evaluated last week. The only problem is, is it's on I-ten coming into the city. It's actually ten point two acres, give or take. But no one's really too keen on putting a sewer treatment facility on I-ten, so. But it may be the only option we have. I reached out to a realtor last week to see if the owner was interested in selling. And have not received any calls back just yet. But as it stands, you know, ideally, we want to put it on the north end of the city because it's the easiest way to come back to our discharge line. But, you know, we can only do what we're allowed to do as far as obtaining the property now. We get, I'm willing to explore, I'm willing to explore expropriation. The problem is, and we may have to go that route, if no one's willing to sell us property in the free market. But there's not many parcels that meet the requirement. So in order to do that, you might have to take fifty acres, you know, and sell it back to the owner. It's complicated. It'd be, it'd be a lot easier if we just had a ten acre, a twelve acre tract that we could just isolate and proceed on. But there aren't that many properties that meet those conditions. So if we look at it, weak. And trust me, this Interstate ten property was a last resort, but it's without any property on the north end willing to cut out ten acres for us. And, I mean, we asked to buy it. We didn't ask for it to be donated or anything like that. We weren't willing to invest the resources, but no one's willing to part with the land, so. If you want to talk about community, I would suggest making some calls to people in the community and let them know how serious it is to get a property for a sewer treatment facility. So just thought I'd mention that because they are part of the community, all of these landlords. And like I said, we're not looking for a handout, just a hand up.
All right, we can go pop. Ten nine seven. I'm going to take your motion. And motion by Councilwoman Brown, second?
No, sir.
Second.
Yes.
I got a second by Councilwoman Lacy. Any objections? Anybody wish to make a comment? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Hold your hand.
Thank you. Get back to, ten nine fifteen. Consider an ordinance of the city of Port Allen providing for the creation of section eight through.
Did we do fourteen?
Fourteen, Mayor.
Fourteen? Okay, ten nine fourteen, public hearing to obtain views regarding an ordinance relating to a city's grease control program. Anyone in the ordinance that's been heard on this agenda? No one wishes to be heard or grease trap?
Grease trap.
Real quick. Jason Hammond, Pushford Cafe.
All right.
Um, once this passes, what is going to be the, I guess you could say, notification criteria in time frame in order to get your permit? Because this is a new permit that's going to be put into place.
A new permit, as far as, because if I read correctly, the businesses that's already in existence, we can't afford to end.
No, that's strictly for the sizing of the warrant. But the, so my grease trap would fall under that grandfather clause.
Right.
Or my grease traps, because I have two. But I would still have to get a permit on an annual basis. I would have to have the testing done on an annual basis to pass it to receive the grease trap permit, correct? That's the way I'm reading it. So I'm asking, what criteria am I going to be, you know, notified, so to speak, other than just listening to y'all vote tonight? You know, when am I going to receive my first application?
Well, once the ordinance is passed and approved by the council, again, we'll send a notice out to each one of the businesses that it will affect and give you, I'm assuming, the council, the greater.
It may be easier, I don't know when the city does other permits, but it may be easier just to start it twenty twenty-four. Since we're already in October of twenty twenty-three. Other words, you know, you'll be required to, your permit will begin January of twenty twenty-four. It's up to the, basically, it's the detail staff will have to work out on that.
Because the way it's written, the way it's written, it's.
The ordinance will be effective immediately, correct? But the city understands that, you know, the city understands that, you know, we need to give some leeway in terms of, first of all, creating its own internal process for all this. So it's not going to be something where, you know, you have a permit, I'll pay for it. You say you gotta create it.
I realize that. I'm just trying to get an idea of time frames, so that's all.
Yeah, and like I say, we'll send a notice out to each one of the businesses and we'll give you that information as to when the effect of this start, which will probably be up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishes to be heard on this agenda? You hear none? Well, public hearing. Ten nine fifteen, consider an ordinance of the city of Port Allen providing for the creation of section eight through one oh nine section eighty-six to one oh nine through eighty-six one twenty-one of Division Three of Article Three of Chapter Eighty-Six of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances for the purpose of enacting the city's grease control program. Ordinance number twelve of twenty, and a three, Mr. Revere?
Ordinance number twelve of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Port Allen providing for the creation of sections eighty-five dash one oh nine through eighty-six dash one twenty-one of Division Three of Article Three of Chapter Eighty-Six of the Port Allen Code of Ordinances for the purpose of enacting the city's grease control program and to abide for related matters.
I'll vote.
Sir.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Brown, second by Councilwoman Revere. Any objections? Anyone from the ordinance wishes to be heard on this agenda? You hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Hold your hand.
Mayor, thank you Evan and thank you Jason for all your bills and shooting your end of it.
All right, ten nine sixteen, condemnation proceeds. Is that what it is?
Not at the summer.
Ten nine seventeen, I can all be better for me, Mr. Joseph?
Y'all didn't vote on ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's so quiet.
Ten nine eighteen, announcements and correspondence. Council, I want to acknowledge that one of our employees, Ms. Erica Taylor, on city of resignation, she is a part-time utility clerk. We're requesting advertising for that vacant position. Secondly, Port Allen Middle School and Port Allen Elementary School have a flower fest Monday, October the thirtieth. Porch closure, road, their road between Jefferson and Sixth Street will be closed due to this.
October thirty?
October thirty, Monday. Also, Jessica Fetrell Parade will take place October twenty-eighth, Saturday at noon, beginning at William Lee Park. And it will end at William Lee Park with a program or festivities after the parade. And lastly, Halloween trick-or-treat hours will be five thirty P.M. to seven thirty P.M. On thirty-first, October.
I have an announcement.
Oh, yeah, this week, this Friday, Port Allen Homecoming and the parade just passed Sunday. And I think Port Allen Place will know.
I have an announcement. If I move.
All right.
The Singing Spirit Dance is tonight at five thirty to nine o'clock P.M. at the Addicts Commendant Center. It's a five mile admission. There will be food and soft drink provided, no alcohol allowed, and the music is by Jude. Also, the Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, the nine fifty-seventh street of Port Allen. We have our Cancer Awareness Twenty Twenty-Three, Stronger Than Cancer, Cancer Walk, Saturday, October twenty-first. At eight o'clock, the walk starts at Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, left on Louisiana Avenue, right on Jefferson, left on Coast Street, and end at the Centennial Park with a moment of prayer and water, and returning back to the church. We are encouraging any and everyone to please come out and support this great walk. And also, the Veteran on Parade. We are still looking for veterans, family members of veterans, to participate on the parade, which would be held November the fifth at one thirty P.M. That is your announcement for today. I thank you council members for wearing your pink shirt. Please do not leave. Please do not leave. We would like to take a photo of you guys in your pretty pink shirts. Thank you.
What time does the walk start?
Eight o'clock.
And that's on the twenty?
Twenty-first.
And I just want to thank everybody for coming out to the Harvard Festival. On Sunday, it was very nice, well attended.
Weather good.
Uh, yes, beautiful weather. Uh, and thank everybody that supported it and, uh, contributed to the event. As well as we having Halloween night for those who also safe fun, uh, for Halloween night at Kingdom Life. On that time, like.
Oh, I'm sorry, y'all. If our speaker for our council speaker program would be that Sunday at eight o'clock at Shallow by Minister Alexis Smith, PhD. She is a member of Saint Paul Missionary Baptist Church of Baton Rouge. So we having a great, uh, program that's Sunday and a powerful walk that's Saturday, so please come out and enjoy.
Any other announcements? Go on, ten thousand nineteen, adjourned?
Move.
Gordon, second, uh, Councilwoman Lacy, being adjourned.